Good evening, everybody. We have a, I actually have a lot to this evening under the chairman's report. And our first up is our recognition of our board member, Alan Bagliavella, who has served on this board for the past 10 years. So we have a little gift for him. Alan, you're in the hot spot.
Yes, please.
Well, we'd like to recognize Alan. Like I mentioned, he's served on the board faithfully for the past 10 years. And so we want to recognize you for your dedication and everything you've done for the Board of Education these past 10 years. And this is just a little something for you.
Thank you very much.
I could add a couple of things. I served on a board back in the early 90s and I've been working with Boards of Education directly since 2008. So I know the kind of commitment that these people put in on a week by week and month by month basis. It adds up to hundreds of hours of volunteer work for the betterment of the school district and the town. So Alan, I too would like to thank you for everything that you do for the Board of Education.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yep. All right, well also this evening we'd like to recognize our Massey representatives. And we only have Michelle here this evening because Will Santi and Kevin Brown had games. So we want to say thank you. Good luck in college.
Thank you.
And we are so happy that you were able to serve on the board this year for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Then the last one, we don't need to call anybody up, but we do want to acknowledge Big Y. Big Y has made donations and I actually will read one of the letters to each of our schools in the amount of $500. And so they, each school is getting a check for $500 from Big Y. So I will read, this one is actually to Bruce Lazar, which is our principal of Stepney Elementary. Dear Mr. Lazar, we are both excited and proud to reveal our newly renovated world-class market to the Monroe community and look forward to exceeding the expectations of our customers. As part of Big Y's longstanding commitment to education, as well as the celebration of our opening, we are pleased to announce our donation of $500 to your school. We ask that you please contact our store director, Mike DiZano, DiRizano, to schedule a time when you or a representative of your school could pick up a check, but they actually enclosed it in the envelope, so we have it, at our location at 535 Monroe Turnpike, Monroe. We look forward to seeing you. Sincerely, Donald H. D. Amore, Chairman and CEO of Big Y. So we appreciate Big Y's donation to our, all our schools, our five schools, in the amount of $500 each.
Now we have to leverage this solid shot, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, see if we can get more from them. Now, that was fantastic. I'm sure all our schools will put that money to very good use very quickly. And thank you again, Alan and Michelle, we appreciate it. We will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. Jim, would you like to discuss on retirement?
Yeah, we have one, one late retirement, Deb Charles, that we accepted the retirement. She had a change in circumstance that kept her from making this decision back in December, but we are happy to include her in our roster of retirees this year. Deb has been with us for, I think, 40 years, but we'll say more about that at a later date. But we really appreciate all that she's done for Monroe and wish her the best of luck in retirement.
Great, thank you. And actually talking about the retirements, next meeting on the 5th at 7 o'clock, there will be a reception here prior to our board meeting that we ask if you can make it at 7:00 to please come, where we will have all the retirees and I think their spouses attend too, if I'm not mistaken, before the meeting and we'll have a little reception for them here. So if you can make it, please come next, on the 5th at 7:00. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. And first up is our Massey rep, which will be you, Michelle.
So prom was on, last week on Friday, and it went very well. Everyone had a lot of fun. It was at the Water View and everyone enjoyed it. And post-prom was after that. And this year, they had a lot of parent volunteers, which is good. And the theme was Night at the Museum, which was really cool. They had a bunch of people dressed up as historical figures walking around and they had also like museum setups. And the big surprise for the evening was a comedian. This Thursday will be the Strings Concert at 7:00 PM. That'll be very good. It's going to be a very long concert and we're also having the band and chorus perform with us in the end, so if you want to come see that. Wednesday, people from Yale are going to be coming in to give a tobacco survey during advisory. Friday is the Specta Gala. And this year, the year that they are using is the 1960s, so there will be a lot of students from different classes presenting different topics about things from the 60s. AP tests are finally over. And at Massey, there were 599 AP tests taken by the students. Senior Apparel Day was today, so all of us seniors wore our shirts to school to show everyone where we're going. And on Thursday, over 200 students are going to see Hidden Figures at the Edminton Hall. It was, all of the AP students had the option to go as sort of a de-stressor after the AP test. The Chorus Concert is next Tuesday and also Capstone is next Wednesday. And on Capstone, we will have an early dismissal for all of the other grades. Limelight is on Saturday, the 27th, where a group of students spend all night writing plays from recommendations of other students and then they perform them on the following day. And the Senior Trip is also next Friday, where we are going to Six Flags. So that's going to be fun. And that's all of it.
Great.
Thank you. Anybody else have any? Yes, David?
And on last Thursday, Pension Committee met. John and Gabby were there. We got an update on the fund, which is doing well. And we voted for the 401A plan for the paraprofessionals. It's been accepted.
Great, thank you very much.
Wasn't able to unfortunately make the last RESC meeting due to a proclorative event, but I do know that on June 1st, which is something that we're all anticipating in regards to the RESC members, the lobbyist who works for CES and the RESC will be sharing with us their updates in regards to what's going on up in the state capitol. So that's June 1st at the next meeting. And something that I know Evan and I think I've shared with you as well, is that they also do superintendent searches, something that Evan has always made us all aware of. Another, I guess, program or something that they also, service I should say, that they offer, as well as some other things that they also ventured into. And they have their end of the year performances as well over at the regional performing arts. So we're always, always invited. If anyone is interested, just let me know and I can contact them as well, or just contact CES directly.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? We had Finance Committee this evening. We got an update on our insurance and we'll talk about that later when we get to that in the agenda. We also had an update on budget and we will be looking at and finalizing our budget for, at our next meeting. Jim is going to bring forward, there has been a few more savings realized, obviously our retirement, and he has some others. So we will have final figures and move forth with, make some decisions next, next week on what we're doing on the budget. So we can roll it because as everybody saw, I sent out an update that JP Shidinsky, our state rep, had over the weekend for us. And it, the numbers did come out. They weren't as bad as JP had anticipated, but it does not look as though this issue is going to be settled anytime soon in Hartford. Jim has heard that it may not even, it may go to October. So unfortunately, we are going to need to move forward. Jim, did you want to say anything else?
Yeah, I was, I was going to, under Superintendent's report, I was going to just say basically what Donna just said, that the governor's proposal came out again, it came out today and it is actually worse than the February one to us, that we were anticipating some movement the other way. But, you know, I guess my reaction is, let's, let's wait to see what the legislature does and go from there. To anticipate that these cuts would be this deep is just unfathomable, what it would do to the community. So I say wait, let's see what the legislators do with that. In the meantime, Gabby is going to roll over the budget. We have it in discussions with Mike Manjos about going forward with the million dollar cut as our starting point until we hear otherwise from the state. Otherwise, we'd have to let those teachers, for reading positions go and that kind of thing. And we don't, we're reluctant to do that until we know exactly what, what's going to happen with the state reimbursements of the various funds from them.
All right, and I'll let Jim talk about the Stepney Roof, which we also discussed, but I'll let him talk about that in his Superintendent report. Anybody else have any committee reports this evening? All right, we will move on to public participation. All right, hearing none, we will move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Okay, Gabby, why don't you start with the fund statement?
Sure. As you can see, insurance is still struggling. As I, we were talking about it in the Finance Committee meeting, we have 23 claimants over $50,000, which I've never seen, not that I've been here for that long, but in seven years we haven't seen that and even before that. And we have five claimants over stop-loss. We are actively working with Cigna and One Digital, who is our broker, regarding how to get a better, how they can help us get a better handle on where we, where they think claims will trend to for the rest of this fiscal year and even into the next fiscal year. Because, as you know, once July 1st hits, the clock starts ticking again on stop-loss and I'm very uncomfortable with us potentially having, you know, large stop-loss claims come through, not even hitting stop-loss and having large claims come through in July and August, because that's pretty much what happened to us last year. Spending, we've asked, you know, for purchase orders to be closed, I think right now, I think today I saw two new requisitions come in, so I have some calls into secretaries asking like, why are we buying science supplies right now? So we're working, you know, my staff is working with them to close purchase orders and get everything paid and done and dusted. And our auditors are coming in next week and shockingly, it is that time of year to start thinking about the audit for this fiscal year end. So they'll do some preliminary legwork next week, they'll just pull some files and things like that. And then they won't come back again until probably October, by which point we'll have the EDO-1 finished, which is the large state report. They audit that and then they'll audit us from the town as well.
Great, thank you.
Can I comment on something?
Sure, absolutely.
Gabby, the chart on page 35, Medical Dental and Prescription Claims for the last 24 months, really puts it into perspective for us. I looked at that and it jumps right out at you about the recent claims, so if you look at that.
And how erratic, and how erratic they've been.
You really, you really grasp, yeah, what's going on. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I was telling the Finance Committee earlier that the irony of April was that One Digital thought that we would have claims at about the 600 or 650 mark for the rest of the year. And I was like, yeah, no, we're already at 900,000. So there's, there's a disconnect right now with what, how and when they're seeing things versus when we're paying out, we're paying out real time.
Yeah.
So, you know, I just, I need them to be able to get back to us on a more timely basis with information.
You know, which is very helpful, this jumps out at you. So thank you.
The Stepney Roof Project is underway. We have our guys working on some electrical work in advance of the demolition work, in advance of the crew that's there. So we actually began that work today. Barrett showed up to do, to start the demolition work on the soffits and got some work done. It was more staging and setup and that kind of thing, but we're already finding some areas of rot that we were unaware of, so we're going to have to be addressing some of those concerns as we go along just as well. I, I just wanted to notify you, this, this hasn't happened in a while, that we've had a field trip of this kind. I was pleased to approve a field trip to the Grand Canyon in April vacation a year from now roughly. I think that's an offshoot of the moratorium that we put on when we did and it caused people to look a little bit more introspectively at what can we do in the United States and stay domestic. And so I was, I just wanted you guys to know that I thought it was a great trip, a great idea to, to explore there and do some of our own, like I say, in-house kind of field trips.
Glad to see it.
Yeah.
What is, what are they doing in the Grand Canyon?
Well, one of the days, they have a rafting trip in there. It's, it's not one of the wild water rafting ones.
Lazy river?
It's a more gentle, a more gentle. But, you know, just the idea that we're looking inward and exploring some of the United States, I think is a great idea.
It's a beautiful country.
I hope to see some, it is.
And is it the whole time in Arizona?
I'd have to, I'd have to go back and refresh my, my memory. I believe it is. Did I even put it in here?
No.
No. Okay, wait, I do have it here, excuse me. Let me check. westward expansion, the national parks, you know, Theodore Roosevelt, John Muir, the impact of the New Deal programs on conservation, so the Hoover Dam is in the trip, those kinds of things. Native Americans, planetary observations and nature conservation are all part of the trip. So a great, a great opportunity. I know that when I was there, when I saw this for the first time, I was awed.
It's amazing.
It's amazing.
Great.
So, great opportunity for the kids.
That's great.
And then, this, just to keep you up to date, you know, the worldwide hacking problem that we've had, it's not affecting us at all. We do not have any Windows XP issues, so we have not been impacted in any way, shape or form by that, but I thought you'd like to know that as well. Okay? And then the last thing is, which is an add-on, is I was talking in the Finance Committee meeting earlier, our enrollment, our kindergarten projected enrollment for Stepney Elementary next year is way down. It's at 52 students right now. We have four sections slated for that. We're going to watch it carefully for as long as we can in making a decision, but we may be chopping a section of kindergarten at that level. Now, one of our retirees or resignations is in that area, so it actually is fortuitous for us. But the downside is that we have some increased special ed needs that Kay came to discuss with me. And the feeling is that we are going to need to add one special ed position next year at Monroe Elementary School. And so it may be a wash between that kindergarten position and a special ed position. So we're keeping an eye on it. But the chance that we pick up 12 to 15 more kids between now and September in one grade at Stepney out does not seem very likely. So we may lose a section there. Okay? And that's it.
Just, if you don't, if you don't mind, I just wanted to comment, I remembered last meeting, we had mentioned how Jack was selected to, to represent, two folks, two folks were chosen to sit at the state, the panel. And I just was reminded when I, when I read your week in review, I think another thing to be really proud of, I don't know if the public knows that, and I think that's something that should, should be mentioned, the fact that out of anybody they could have chosen, right? They've chose somebody, and of course, somebody that's quality. And so I'm proud of the fact that we had somebody from our town or from our district chosen to, to represent and to speak about student privacy and things like that and technology that was spoken about. So I think that was great. That was Friday, I believe.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, Jack is, Jack has been a leader in the state of Connecticut in technology education, not only in the state, but also regionally as well. Okay? Because there are subgroups within the state where they're meeting and discussing the kinds of issues that are, that we're facing with technology. So it really is no surprise, Jack's expertise was called upon because he has been a vocal opponent, proponent of this Privacy Act.
The Act, yeah.
So.
Nice, great.
And it went very well, right, Jack?
Yeah.
Conversation was well, well heard, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Great, well, let's move on. We have up next, the presentation of K-12 library curriculums. Are you using the overhead?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much for those kind of words. It was interesting in Friday's conversation, I happened to sit right next to the, the Northeast rep for Google was in the chair right next to me. Really, Google hires some very bright folks. And one of the points that I made in this conversation with, we had about 80 people in the room, and I said, you know, there are benefits to the law, the Student Privacy Act, and there are things that we're doing from that law that are benefiting students. There are reactions to problems that we need to have. If there's a hack, what do we do? But one of the things the law doesn't address, and one of the things we're going to talk about with the very talented group of people behind me today, is what to do before we have to look at the law. And that is how we teach students how to avoid these issues. And one of the things we've done, really invested a lot into in the library program within our curriculum, is how do you look for good information? How do you know if it's good information? How do you know if it's safe? And how do you avoid problems? One of the examples I gave on Friday is I said, you know, in this hack that occurred last weekend with the phishing in Google, I don't know if you heard about that one, it kind of got pushed aside as this ransomware attack came out later this week, is that the email address was in a blind copy field with like 14 H's. Well, let's think about this for a minute. Isn't it better that we're talking with students about, if you see an address like that, don't go there? As opposed to the unfunded mandates that we see a lot of coming back at us in terms of how we're going to use staff time. So while there are benefits to the Student Privacy Act and I think more reforms coming to it to make it a better law, one of the places we've really invested a lot of time in the Monroe Public Schools is how to avoid the issues before they get to us. And I think, knock on wood, you know, we haven't had major issues and I think part of the reason why is those efforts are helping. So what we're going to do right now is, I do have Chromebooks out for you, but feel free to use your own devices. Part of this is interactive, so the library media teachers will be showing you in a little bit how that works. We have a great group of people here. They include Heather Ross from Monroe Elementary School, Mary Runner from, from Juan Hollow, Jan Burney from Jacquey Hollow, Maine. We have Sarah Nazaro from the STEM Academy and Megan Letko from Massey High School. So they comprise our library department. And I'm just going to show you a little bit of what they're going to do and then they'll walk you through exactly what goes on in our schools. So first of all, we've been working to reform our library curriculum. We've been working within the county as a whole. Fairfield County has had a very active group dedicated to reimagining the library and they've really produced some fantastic outcomes from that. It's actually been written up in Journal for the American Association of School Librarians. And, you know, so it's really had a national presence. And then internally, we've been working hard to create our curriculum in a way that it best meets the needs of our students. So this has been going on for about two or three years and we thought it's time that we highlight with you some of that work and how it looks in classrooms. So what are some of the things that are going on? Well, first of all, I just want to make you aware of some of the changes in terminology that are going on nationally. The term Library Media Center has been the term in schools, but if you think about it, the term media is rather dated. When I was a kid, I would go down to the library if my classroom teacher wanted the film strip. I don't know if anybody's old enough to remember that with the ding, you know, and if you heard the ding, you got to turn the film strip. Well, that's where the term Library Media Center came from. It was a place you went to to get media. Well, in this day and age, you can go anywhere to get media. So really, that title is not very relevant these days. So instead, the term that is really becoming more prominent is Library Learning Commons, meaning it's a place, a common place for people to learn and it's not just students. It's also for teachers. And if you walk into the Massey Library on a regular school day, it's a buzz of activity. Over here, you'll see faculty, you'll see faculty with classes, you'll see students collaborating. So again, another key difference is, if you look at this black and white, Jim asked me today, where'd you get that picture? I said, well, that could have been more street school where I went to elementary school around, I won't say exactly what year, but it really, that looks just like the elementary school I went to. It was the shushing library, it had to be absolutely quiet, everybody worked by themselves. And we want to support by themselves work, but we also want to support collaboration as well as whole class. So it's not just the quiet, independent, it's collaboration and it's whole class instruction. So that's a key change. Also, we're working to change the kinds of furniture we have available. We want the room to be flexible. This is a great example. Board meetings will occur here, but then there will be times when we'll have, for example, the Capstone and the training for all the Capstone judges will be right here and this whole room is reconfigured for that purpose. So again, that's the spirit of the Learning Commons. We're training adults to be judges on that day of the Capstone. Faculty meetings, professional development, this is a hub for all that learning, adult and student. Access is a big deal. Again, I think back to my elementary experiences, a new book within a week was a big deal. Now, eBooks within seconds, our volumes change, our databases change in seconds and minutes every single day of the week. And so with that, you know, access of these resources doesn't occur just in this room. This is not just a repository to get stuff, it's also a digital hosting area to be able to access information 24/7. So our websites reflect that as well as our practices and our curriculum. So those are the key changes we're trying to make. So quick overview of the curriculum and then you're going to see examples of this presented by the faculty in just a few moments. Overarching, it's about information literacy, information in its various forms. The print text on these shelves just over on the other side here, it's still highly relevant and we need to teach students how to navigate those resources. But in addition, research, I can tell you in my own dissertation, I'd say more than 50% of the sources that I cited were digital back when I did it. I'm looking at Alan, I don't know how yours panned out, but I was at that cusp where things were becoming more digital. I think for students now, it's probably shifting a preponderance of digital resources. Digital citizenship, big deal. Safe and appropriate technology use. Getting back to this conversation about, we want to teach students proactively. We can create all the safeguards in the world when they're with us, K-12. When our kids leave for college, there are none, they go away. So we want to teach to the point we become irrelevant. We want them to make good choices, or at least better choices, before they leave us so then when they go off to college, they're well-prepared. And then last is digital literacy. How do you find good information and know that it's good and verify that it's good? In this age of fake news, how do you know if it's fake or real? And we actually have done lessons on that. What are ways to validate if the source is valid, if the information is valid? So these are really timely and relevant kinds of things that we're teaching our students. So what the faculty will be doing in a moment is they're going to walk you through this chart. Just to let you know, we created, this was kind of a founding principle for creating our Assured Experiences. We met with all grade level teams, all departments, two years ago. We created Assured Experiences for every grade level, every department, which embedded research and technology in all of those to ensure that we have a logical sequence of technology skills K through 12 and a logical sequence of research skills K-12. So they're going to highlight some of that for you in real time. And just to let you know, on the digital citizenship piece, that's shared with others like health guidance and our SROs, so it's not just what occurs in the library. So first up, we're going to go to NearPod. And again, there are Chromebooks out and I left the NearPod page open for you. I'll circulate to help you out if you need. And we're going to start out with Mary Runner. I'll circulate to help you out if you need, and we're going to start out with, uh, Mary Runner and Heather Ross showing you what these principles look like in grades K and grade three.
Okay, so, um, we're going to start out tonight using, um, an interactive presentation tool that we, um, began with in the beginning of the year, really to teach digital citizenship, um, to the students. And then we realized the more that we used it, um, and, you know, the, the better reaction we got from the students about the, how interactive it was. Um, we realized that there was actually a whole library of lessons in other subject areas that we could use, and then that we could create our own as well. Um, so the way that we're going to start is if you, um, on your device, just go to nearpod.com.
They're there already.
Oh, great, okay. So we, um, we're going to put up a code in a minute, and then up in the corner, I think you should see Join Now or, um, Enter Code. Yeah, right kind of up in the top middle, it says Enter Code, or right, right in the center, it says Enter Code. So Heather's going to put up um, the code right now, and then once you put that in, the screen will just ask you for your first name, um, and then to press Send. It is the, nope. Okay, so if you just put in the code W Z Y H D, and it will do caps for you, so you can just put that in. And then what will happen is your screen will then mirror what you see on my screen. Um, and what's nice is that then the teacher, um, takes control of the screen, and so the students sort of are forced to have to pay attention to what's, what's on the screen in front of them, and they can't advance them or go back. Yep, and then just your first name and then Send.
That's what we do on the screen, just put our first name and Send.
Yeah. And then you should see a person try to. That's what should be on your screen. Okay, so, um, like I said, it's nice because the, um, teacher now does control the screen, and so, um, whatever the kids see on the smartboard, they will also see on their own device. Um, and then in a few minutes, you'll see how it also gets interactive. So once, um, there's, you know, every once in a while, a screen will pop up, and the kids are asked to either type something in or draw something and then send it, and then they can see their work up on, um, on the screen. So we'll test that out in a minute. So we're going to talk about digital citizenship, but at the same time, throw in a few key NearPod activities, so you can see how that program works as well. Um, so in kindergarten, the goal at the end of kindergarten, um, for digital citizenship and technology is that they do very basic note-taking and, um, then create a Google slideshow as their presentation tool. And so that's sort of where we're at now. We start, you know, from the very beginning and just work little by little for all of those key concepts, um, that they need to get to that end result, which is where we are in school right now. Um, their literacy piece of this is they gather their information from an online database called PebbleGo, which you'll also see in a few minutes, that really is geared to K to two learners, so it's nice. It's really at their level. There's a listening piece. If they, um, if their reading level is just a little too high for them, they can always listen to the information. So, um, you know, they can still get the information as well, even if they aren't, um, as strong of a reader. The research piece is a very, very basic note-taking. They have four different areas where they, um, take their notes, and you'll see in a minute, PebbleGo is, um, is in different sections and tabs, so it makes it very easy for the kids to find um, what piece of information they need, kind of what the important piece is. So we're starting to teach them about how to find and see what's important, um, to pull out for, again, very basic, um, note-taking at this age. The digital citizenship part is simply that they are beginning to log into their school Google accounts, and that, um, they're using a secure username and password that belongs just to them. So they're understanding now that it's important to have that um, and not to share it with anybody, and that it's your own username and password. And then finally, the digital literacy at the, um, you know, the end of the project is that they are able to create that Google slideshow. They are using a presentation tool, um, that they have, uh, used their notes to create, so that all those pieces kind of come together. Um, so now your screen is going to advance. So what they do do again is they use PebbleGo to pick an animal of their choice that they want to find a little more information about, um, and then they start their, their basic research. So this is just an example of one of the note sheets that we give them. They have four questions. Um, so they, what animal are you researching? They fill that in. And then for these two examples, they want to find out where their animal lives and what their animal eats. Um, and then they write their, you know, at this point, we're asking them to find one sentence, one fact, and write that down, um, on their note sheet. And this is a screenshot of what one of the pages in PebbleGo looks like. So this is on the polar bear. We do have it up on the Habitat tab, but you can see on the top, there's a Body tab, a Habitat, um, a Food, a Lifecycle, Fun Facts. And so the notes are broken down into four of those, so it's very easy for the kids to see, and, you know, we talk, okay, there's the Body tab, here's your body question, and, you know, find one thing that you think is interesting, um, and write that down in your notes. So, getting to the kind of interactive piece of NearPod, if you just take a minute and scan over that information on where polar bears live, you're going to have a little, um, interactive piece in a minute. So if you have that information down, I'm going to change your screen. And then I'm going to ask you on your screen, it does say, where do polar bears live, or where does your animal live? So now you're able, you now have control of your screen. You can type that answer in. This is just an example of a, a basic, open-ended question that, um, you can insert into your, your NearPod slideshow. And then as the answers, um, as the students answer and then hit Send, you can see them come up on the board. So then you can talk about the answers, you can discuss the answers. I sometimes minimize the screen until everyone sends their answers up, so they're not just, you know, copying what everyone else puts up. But you can also see, you know, how many people have participated. There's a Share button. You can press on the Share button, and it will actually share out. You know, if you want to say, "Oh, you know, Gabby had a, a great answer. Let's look at her answer more closely," and you can press Share, and then it comes up on everyone's screen, so everyone can see it um, more closely. So that's just an example of a, an open-ended style question that you might use, um, in NearPod. Um, and then this is their kind of final project, so they do eventually, um, create that Google slideshow, so they're inserting images. They're, um, creating, uh, three different slides, plus their title slide, or four different slides, plus their title slide, and then they're writing their facts. So if you scroll down on your screen, you can actually see. So, um, this student did skunk, so he inserted his images successfully. And then I believe, can you scroll? Can you scroll down? I don't know why I'm not being. But you can, you know, he has his, his information, which, you know, for, for five is really impressive. He's, has his body, skunks can weigh up to six to ten pounds, which is my favorite slide ever. Uh, you know, his interesting facts, skunks make people smell. Um, and then where, I think he has, I don't know where they live. But, you know, all this, they were typing, they were using, um, their notes to then transfer over into a presentation. Um, so they were really getting that very basic, those basic, basic research skills at five and six years old, you know, and, and just kind of that beginning piece. So that is where we leave off in kindergarten, and then Heather is going to talk about, um, third grade, here we pick up a few years later.
All right, and you'll see that we have the same sections when we move up from kindergarten to third grade. Um, in between, we're going to encourage literacy reading, both fiction and nonfiction. But now, as we get into gathering information, we ask them to use more sources. So typically, as they're starting to do some research, they're starting to find information, we ask them to use about three sources for, in third grade. Some of the sources that they might use would be books, they can use databases, they can use websites, they can use, use newspaper or magazine articles, both online and offline. But it gives them a different variety of, um, perspectives by letting them see different kinds of sources. When we get into the research, the focus continues, um, and we look a lot at nonfiction text features, which means that by able, by being able to use the text features in a book, um, such as the title, the context, the index, the glossary, it helps them identify whether that book is really going to help them learn what they need to find a lot easier and quicker. And, um, it also helps them determine if it's going to be a good source, because you can look for those kind of text features in websites and articles as well, and not just in books. And then in, um, then they're going to start doing more note-taking, and with the note-taking, they take notes from books. Um, and we're starting that actually in first grade is taking notes from books. They're going to use websites, they're going to use, um, databases as in PebbleGo or another one that we use. TrueFlix, sorry, Heather. Um, and then they also take notes from both video and audio sources. And that's prep, um, for the S-Bax as well, because they do have to use that listening and find the answers or information from video and audio sources, um, in the S-Bax. And then as we move on to the digital citizenship, um, now we're making an effort, a more of an effort to let them identify what are good sources or not. Um, so as they look at those sources, not only are they good for what they need to learn, but also are they quality sources in general? Um, looking at websites and things like that. Um, and so then they get to evaluate the sources and, um, and cite their sources. So they have to learn how to give credit for their information. They need to know, um, who, who wrote it, um, and where, how current it is, and those are things that help them evaluate their source. If it's from nineteen eighty-five, and it's talking about planets, and they still talk about Pluto, it's not going to be a very good source for their information. Um, so it needs to be current as well. And then moving into the digital citizenship, there's, they're signing into their own accounts, so learning about privacy. And, um, we even were talking about privacy policies, like how does a website protect your privacy? Creating and keeping personal and private information, such as your passwords and your logins and things like that. And then using search strategies to find information. And then finally, in the digital literacy, they focus on creating presentations along with their research. They still use Google Slides, but now that they're going to, um, branch out and use other kinds of presentation projects too. Um, I was just helping a third grade class or student for their project who was making a website. I'm sorry, not a website, they were doing a video. And then I had some fourth graders who were actually making websites as different ways to present their same information besides just using slides and going over and over. All right, and then, um, so let's look through some of the things that we have here as demonstration. Um, one of the big areas that we really focus on in our research skills is how to take notes and what's important when we take notes. Um, we talk about citing sources, that if you're not, you're really kind of stealing somebody else's information if you're not giving them credit for it, that, um, you need to be sure that, that you have cited your source. And then we move, um, we talk about some rules for finding notes. Like, don't put in a lot of extraneous, um, words that keep it short, keep it concise, only take what you really need. And then this is an example of how we practice taking notes. Um, this is looking at trash and treasure. Clearly, the gold is the treasure, and the rocks are the trash. And if you were to read those three sentences, they would, um, give you a, it helps to, um, identify which is the most important piece of information. So then they look at what does my animal eat? And there's one, um, and I have to say, I can't read it from here now, but tells that, uh, one of them talks about how a giraffe can reach high into the trees to eat. One of them says that, um, that there's a specific kind of leaf that they eat. And, and so we would put the, how they eat it in the trash, and then what's that particular thing that they eat, and focusing just on what they eat as for the treasure. Um, and then, I'm going to play it on yours. This is an example of a video that they might listen to. And, well, it's not going to play up here, it should play on your individual machine.
Yeah, they click.
People live in all kinds of places.
Or it will play on this one.
So do animals. There are animals all around us. An animal's neighborhood is called a habitat. Every habitat provides an animal with food, water, shelter, and space to move around in. Animals and plants depend on each other for survival. Most.
So you don't really have to hear the whole thing to get the idea of what we're talking about, but it would then be followed by something like this. Um, and this is to help them to start in taking information from a video. So we've given some suggested items that they might use for notes, and we really want them to look at them and select the three most important pieces. What, uh, what should you really walk, walk away from, from this video? And then, once they've selected them, then we would discuss them, and then you'll notice at the bottom, it says, "Retype the notes in bullet form using the most important information." So now we've talked about which is the most important, and then break it down and show me how you would write it in note, as notes. And I think it's a switch in thinking, because we always tell the kids, "Write in complete sentences, give complete details." And here we are going, wait, stop, break it down into little pieces, because that's going to help you so that you're not copying somebody else's work and, um, plagiarizing it, or just taking all that extra time and energy to, uh, duplicate it. Um, here's an example, and you can see on your screen, there's three that were highlighted, and followed by the bullet points at the bottom. Okay, and here's, um, an opportunity for you to participate. Um, draw one type of habitat that you saw in the video. And you'll see that there's now, um, a drawing opportunity on your screen, and you can use your mouse and draw. Once you submit it, then it will put it up on the screen. Little brave drawers out there, artists, I mean. I'll find you. There we go. Very nice. I like your habitat. Thanks, Jack. That's okay.
I can see the two over here are working very hard.
I know. I didn't want to interrupt the progress.
This is hard.
It is. Let's see. There we go. Very nice. Thank you for participating. Oh, there's one more coming up. Ooh, you've got colors there. All right, so that's an idea of another way that the kids can part, or the children can participate in a discussion and get some feedback. All right. Um, this is an example, and I have to tell you, um, the student can pronounce that name very well. I believe it's Rosina Baggi, and, uh, she is a computer scientist, and this is an example of a third grader's notes that she took as we were working on a project about a most important woman, um, who should get the Most Important Woman Award. And so the students each researched a woman in history and had, um, had the opportunity to choose who they think was most important. And so this is the one who actually won, and, um, so these are an example of the notes. And you can see she started out with the title, which we always talk about doing. Um, you've got the links that she's using for citing her sources, and then there's the notes that are underneath it. And then this is a website, a screenshot of a website, um, that we put together, and what that does is it gives the kids some links to start with, um, as opposed to having them going out and searching for all the information.
Yeah, it comes up.
It does? Okay. And then here's PebbleGo again, which you saw earlier. There's also TrueFlix, but then there are some other resources that we have found. Um, here is, what used to be called Icon, now it's Research It, and that is the state's databases that they provide for the libraries or for schools. And then there's also other ones down here. This is TrueFlix, and then these are some others that were, um, dated, online databases that we found that would be very helpful. So we put together this page that has all these resources there for them to use all at once. And then here is, the last thing is just an example of one of the projects that a student did. And, um, so we can see.
You can scroll down on your screens, I don't rely on ours.
I can't. Okay.
But on, on your screen, you can scroll down and kind of see now from kindergarten to third grade, the jump and, um, oh, there it is.
There we go.
Yeah. To jump in the information.
Exactly, so compared to the kindergarteners' project, here is a third grader's project. Um, using your text features, we have a table of contents, we have images with captions. Um, we've broken it into chapters. More captions. Chapter two and so forth. So comparing different kinds of starfish here, where they live. And you can see they're still kind of answering those same kind of questions, but they're doing it to a different depth. Here's where they live, their habitat. And then some fun facts to go along with it.
We all remember doing this in kindergarten and third grade.
It was just like that too, wasn't it? Yep, to which one? This one? Okay, so I'm just gonna get rid of these.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about what happens in middle school. And I think you're beginning to see how, um, the skills build one, from one year to the next, which is a really good thing because I find with my students, I have to repeat it multiple times. So it's really nice to have a continuum of where they're doing more and more over the, over the course of the year. You're repeating skills, you're repeating the teaching. By the time you get to the end of, the end of the school year, they've got some of this stuff down pretty, pretty good. Um, so we start our, our literacy, I do a lot with sixth grade with making sure that they come in and get things to read. I've got curriculum, books for curriculum use. I consult with teachers, um, to make sure that I have what they need. Um, and then for recreational reading, very often the language arts teachers will come in and we, we have a, we have an activity called Speed Dating with Books. And they're in sixth grade, so they don't necessarily know what speed, the whole speed dating thing is about. But it's really kind of cool because you put books on all the tables, lots and lots of books on all the tables. And you just give them four or five minutes to go from one table to the next and just kind of spot read and see what they'd like to read. And then they can take that book with them to the next table, or they can dump that date at the next table and pick up with somebody else, um, book wise. So that's one of the things we do in, in sixth grade. Um, we teach them to find information, a variety of sources. A little bit about website evaluation, my big thing with sixth graders is to try to dispel the myths about using our, how do we evaluate a website? They all come to me thinking that you look at, look at what's after the dot in the W-W-W. And I have to kind of get that, get them away from that because what comes after the dot isn't necessarily what tells you whether it's a good website or not. There are plenty of really good dot coms and there are plenty of dot, or, orgs that I would not recommend that they use. The other thing I encourage them to do, and many of the teachers, as soon as I say this, are aghast, but I say, "A good place to start is Wikipedia." And that's because they have, and even some of you just raised your head when I said that. But I just think that it is one of the better sites to use for starting, um, and it has a lot of things going for it. It's pretty heavily moderated. Um, they do have sources that are listed, it's very timely. And most of the time, the editors of Wikipedia will make sure that they, they check the, the sources and correct and edit. So it is a good starting place. Responsible use of information, yes, they have to cite their sources. Um, and you'll see that, you know, teaching them how to make sure that they, um, aside from just citing their sources, make sure that they use it, use their information responsibly. We go into plagiarism a lot. And I try to teach them not to thesauricize their notes, um, you know, just changing a word here and there to make things, um, and they think that that's okay. So, you know, they really have to read for understanding and put it in their own words. Um, creative rights and responsibilities, we talk a little bit about copyright and the difference between copyright and plagiarism. Um, and their digital footprint and, and all of what we've talked about already in terms of picking out passwords that are, you know, pretty break, break proof. And online ethics, which in middle school, it gets a little dicey sometimes because they, they like to fool around and they like to turn off the computer of the guy next to them. Or they like to hack into each other's accounts and say silly things in Google Docs. So you have to kind of really teach them that that's, that really is part of online ethics of, of what you need to do to make sure that you're respecting the rights of other people's property, intellectual property.
Not a hack, but a sharing of a document.
Well, yeah. Yeah. And we use citation tools, right now we're using EasyBiv and that's kind of getting a little, a little bit, we're having a hard time with that with all the ads that are on there. So we're gonna have to probably try to find something else. Um, but for now, we're using it and they know how to, they've learned how to use it. Collaboration tools like Google Slides, um, I love Google Classroom, um, I love Google Docs and how you can share and, you know, I will stand there. And they, they just share their notes with me so I can tell what they're doing at any time during the class. Um, presentation tools, again, mostly it's Google Slides. So, let's go to the next. Okay, oh, okay. So what I decided to do a few years ago with, uh, seventh grade, I needed to teach them information literacy skills. And I had a project that was, that we'd done for like four or five years about famous places in the world. And after doing it for four years, I was dead bored of it and they were bored. So I did a little research and found Genius Hour, which was started by Google, um, within their corporation. Where they give twenty percent of the work week to, um, your employees to make, to come up with innovative ideas to make the company better. And so I, I decided to design a four-week project of the kids doing a project of their choosing. They get to choose whatever it is that they want to investigate, whatever it is that they feel passionate about, whatever it is that they may want to make better, whatever it is that breaks their heart. Um, and what they need, what they want to learn, learn about. And we start with an inquiry question. So this is just a question building slide where, you know, you start out with Google-able questions, what like, what is a car? Who invented the car? And, you know, that doesn't make for a really, a deep project. But as you go down, how has cars affected life in the United States? Well, that's not necessarily a Google-able where you get an answer and it's a researchable question. Now we're getting into something that they would have to really do some research on. All the way down to what changes would you see in Monroe if there's suddenly no cars? We usually have discussions about this and it's amazing what these kids come up with. You know, when they stop and think about, well, we live in Monroe, if we didn't have cars, we'd have to take the train, how would we get to the train? You know, and, and it just, it kind of gets the wheels turning and it gets them into the habit of making questions that are investigatable. So, we use the digital citizenship skills through website evaluation. And I don't think we have an example of it here, but I have a sheet that I give them. Um, who, the most important thing is who is responsible for the information on the page? Either an individual author, and if there is an individual author, you'd better be able to find out what their credentials are. If it's a publisher, if it's a nationally recognized, something like National Geographic or New York Times or Time Magazine, um, you can pretty well know that you can trust it. And then, you know, you talk about the date, you talk about whether or not the information is accurate, can you verify it in other sources? And those are some, some of the things that we do, I tell them about the Goldilocks rule, if it's something that you can read and understand, but you already know the information, it's too easy for you. If it's something that you read and you can't understand it because it's too difficult, then that's too much for you. You're looking for information that's just right. And the note taking, I spend a lot of time with this. I tell them bullet points, I tell them short phrases only, I don't want to see paragraphs. And that kind of goes back to what Heather was talking about, how we, you know, spend all this time telling kids to put things in, in full sentences. And now we're kind of pulling back, but it's to teach them to take short, pithy notes that have the information that they need. That also helps them not to plagiarize. Because they're putting it in their own words, then they, then they won't be tempted to copy and paste. And then on to the next, we're gonna be doing, showing you some examples. Okay, so the first year I did it, this was a poster, because I have four weeks to teach this. So, my whole thing was I really wanted them to go out and build something. I can't teach all those skills and they, and the kids build within four weeks and really get it all done. So, this was a poster that a kid did, he wanted to know what dogs see. Um, and how is it different from, from, from the rest of us, uh, from humans? So, this is, this was his poster. Um, this was, apparently a lot of kids are really interested in what animals see and how they see, and the dog vision or, or even the cat vision. So that was one of the projects that we did. Another Genius Hour project that we did, um, and this was this year, so we've kind of pumped it up a little bit. Um, I, one of them, one of the girls wanted to know, and I don't know if you can see too well, but, um...
How is today in the nineteen fifties, how are today in the nineteen fifties different in terms of medicine?
Right, she was talking about the heart and how the heart, how the heart works. So she found out the different medications that they would use for heart back in the nineteen fifties and now in modern times, how they, you know, this cat scan machine and the, um, the stents that they put in. She had all of that. Her, it, we found out that her aunt or her grandmother, I guess, had been a heart surgeon. And her big thing was she wanted to build a heart valve, a working heart valve. And we were all set to do it and then our three D printer didn't work and STEM's three D printer didn't work. So she didn't get to do that, she was really disappointed, but this was a great project for her. And moving on to eighth grade, we have the independent research project, which kind of is like Genius Hour, except that it lasts all year. And it is designed to get them ready for the capstone project when they're in high school. So it's kind of a mini capstone. And I have about seventeen kids in two different classes and it's the same principle. You choose a topic that you're really interested in, you create several inquiry level questions. And you create a five to seven minute presentation that is seen by some faculty members and board members. Last year was the first year we did it at Jaki Hala and it was a tremendous success. We were amazed at how wonderfully the kids did. Um, and it's the same thing, you know, they have to evaluate their websites. Now we throw in, they have to use an online database from the research Connecticut, CT.org. Um, it's because we have access to that. We encourage them to go to the public library to get some books. I encourage, I don't encourage them, it's a, it's a requirement that they use a variety of sources, including web, database, books. Um, of course, they have to, they create a, an annotated bibliography, so it, they're not just doing their note, their, um, work cited page in MLA format, but they're also annotating that and giving a short summary of the sources that they used. Um, and then they present. And so this was how music, musicals evolved in the early United States. We had a theater kid last year and this was her presentation, she did a great job. And then one of the other girls did, um, what are some of the misconceptions surrounding, um, the Great Depression? So that was her, her project. And there's questions and answers, um, they also have to interview people or at least come up with five really good interview questions. They don't always get to interview someone, but they do have to come up with the questions. So, um, do we have any more after that?
Nope.
What was that?
So the overarching goal of the middle school is definitely to increase, um, and refine those information literacy skills. And that's all leading up to, uh, what they'll be doing in Masic. By offering them more sophisticated resources and, uh, more complicated projects that they can work on. Then they, it really does ready them for their high school experience. So Meg is going to tell them a little bit about that.
That was good, Sarah.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Megan Lefkow, I'm the media specialist here at Masic. Um, so what I chose to show you was one of the examples, um, that we do. And a short experience that fits really nicely into the curriculum. Um, the World Literature, um, classes do Macbeth. And every year before they start Macbeth, we do a fun, interesting research activity where the kids have to decide if they think that William Shakespeare really was the author of all of Shakespeare's worth, works. There's a lot of controversy out there that says that Christopher Marlowe is really the author or Sir Francis Bacon or Edward de Vere. So the kids are put into groups and they are set up as lawyers. They need to defend one of these men and prove their case, that their person really did write all of these works. How this fits into literacy, the kids are researching scholarly artic, articles they find on the online databases. Um, they're evaluating online videos and taking notes, again, similar to what they've done in the elementary schools, but now we're taking it to the next level. For research, again, they're gathering information, they're using those note-taking skills. They need to provide an argument, so they need to know both sides. So they not only need to know, um, what William Shakespeare's information is, if they're William Shakespeare's lawyer. But they also need to know what William de Vere's team's gonna say, I mean Edward de Vere's team's gonna say, or Christopher Marlowe's team. So they're really researching both sides of an argument, uh, which is a very important skill. Uh, again, digital citizenship, they're respecting each other online, they're collaborating on a Google document, the whole class. So they need to make sure that they are using that properly, citing their sources, and again, val, evaluating websites. The literacy, they're using the online databases, again, Google Docs, um, and Google Classroom is also something that we use. So some of the resources that I pull for them, um, we have a really engaging video on YouTube. There's a movie called Anonymous that is actually based on this idea that Shakespeare's not really Shakespeare. So I show them the movie trailer to that, to kind of get them sparked and ready to go. Um, another, um, subscription that we have is called Classroom Video On Demand. So what I do, see this opens up, through Destiny, which is our, um, library catalog. I make a collection of videos that the students for World Lit can access, is Shakespeare For Real. Um, they can look either Christopher Marlowe, Edward de Vere, they watch these videos, they take notes, um, within their groups. There's usually about four or five kids in each group. One kid usually is assigned to watch all the videos on Marlowe, but other kids are assigned to watch videos on the other men. So that they can find out what the other teams are gonna present. So the final product of this is that they're in a classroom, we make it, um, I'm usually the judge, um, or the teacher, so let's play. Are the judge, um, we get up, the kids have to actually present as if they're lawyers in front of us and prove their case. And the other students are asking them questions back, just like they would in a courtroom. So, um, they need to, know both sides so that they're prepared. Um, again, the online databases, you can see from the other presentations that they've kind of been bringing them to the databases, narrowing it down for them. Here, they have all of these to choose from. So they really have to know from all their K through twelve, in this case, ten, because they're ninth, they're tenth graders. Experience which databases are gonna be the most beneficial for them to use. Um, they should know that Shakespeare Uncovered is gonna be helpful, Literary Reference Center, Explorer. They're probably not gonna be going to, um, e-magazines for this, um, assignment. Right, so that's hopefully a skill that we're encouraging them and leading them in the right direction. Uh, Google Classroom, I created a Google Classroom so that when the student, oh, this might be logged into Jack, but I have a classroom. That when they log in, the students have all of these documents that's accessible, um, including a Google Doc. Hopefully we'll log in, excellent. Um, which the students get to put their information in. And you can see that all of these are notes taken, um, by one group for this assignment. And they've citing their source at the end of each of their notes. Each kid is a different color, so the teacher and I would know, okay, so Suzie is the blue and Tony's the red. So that we can, when we're assessing them, know who's contributing. And it's timestamped and we know when they did it. Um, and then all the groups have access to this document, just like a real lawyer would have the other team's information, they can see. So they are all kind of on the same page. And again, this talks to the respect in the document that they are giving proper information, they're citing properly, um, and they're interacting appropriately on the document. Um, and the final thing I do, um, just to make sure that they're getting reliable information, again, with this Shakespeare, there is a little bit of a controversy piece, it's a controversy. So they need to make sure they're finding information from scholarly sources that's appropriate. It's not a random website, but a university or a professor or something that's vetted, um, from our databases or from a reliable resource. They can't just say, "Oh, well, I think this, well, why do you think that? Now prove it." And when they get up as the lawyers, they need to make sure they say, when they're... And when they get up as the lawyers, they need to make sure they say, when they're proving their case, well, William Shakespeare is the author of Shakespeare's works because, and then prove where they got their information from, which is an important piece. So that is one assignment that we do, one of the many that we do with the students to promote digital citizenship and digital learning. Another quick piece is, so this year, this is one of the first times we did this, but we wanted to make sure that we were addressing digital citizenship, digital citizenship to the whole school. So this year, I was fortunate enough to have a block of time in a freshman advisory where I was, again, fortunate enough to show them a video. So several, two students and two faculty members were kind enough to donate their time and talk about the importance of social media, your online presence. And in this case, for the college-bound student. And why it's so important, even from freshman year, to set yourself off in the right direction online and how to act appropriately online. We'll not make you watch the whole video, but we talked about maybe watching the first minute or so just so you have a feel for what.
I think that digital footprint is basically everything that can be found online about you. And I think that it is primarily created through social media. Whether it's with, you know, conversations you have with your friends or the things that you post or the pictures that you post or the things that you like, people can find out a lot about you through social media. Also, I think that it's also gonna do other outlets that post things about you, such as like the newspaper or, you know, things like that.
So that video, every freshman watched it in their advisory. Again, they had a NearPod activities, activities similar to what you saw with the elementary schools that they went in, it was interactive, they answered questions. And then I used that feedback to kinda see where everybody was at. And then we can use it in the future if we show this video again. And hopefully we have some growth over time in their knowledge of digital citizenship and the importance of really creating a positive digital footprint for yourself and how that represents you out in the world. So this is definitely an initiative that we're gonna keep going with and making sure that the kids are using the internet safely and wisely. That's it, yeah.
If I could add just a couple of comments here. If there's, if there's any take-home messages that I would want you to have, you know, listening to these presentations. One, this is incredibly hard work to do. And we have made awesome strides in putting together a well-articulated curriculum, K to 12, in this. And I really wanna thank Jack and his team for all that hard work. It's, it's ongoing, it's a couple of years in the process. And, and I think the other thing is that the, it really, I mean, the other take-home is look at the grade level differences and what we're asking of kids to do. That kindergarten, grade three stuff is, just boggles my mind that these kids are online doing this kind of research at that level. And I, and I think it's, it's fabulous. So again, thank you for that as well. So thanks for all your hard work, everybody. Any questions for Jack and the team? Well, no questions, me and you guys did a thorough job.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate it, thank you so much. All right, we will move on to old business. And we have magnet school tuition.
Yeah, Gabby, you just wanna speak to that?
So very briefly, as you know, we joined a lawsuit with Stratford and Trumbull. And I believe Fairfield was in it also. This is because the Bridgeport Board of Education asked the state for permission to charge tuition to surrounding districts for children who attend the Discovery Inter-District Magnet School, which is a pre-K to eight program, and also the Fairchild Wheeler High School, which is a high school, nine through 12. And it would be about $3,000 per student. We have thirty, at this time, we have 31 students attending the two schools. So the judge basically ruled, she didn't really rule against us, but she sort of kicked it back, for lack of a better term. She said that she would want to know that, she said that we didn't file something called a 4-176 petition, which is asking the commissioner to reconsider her decision. That petition was actually filed in early April. So I think there's like a timing issue on this. And the petition basically asked the commissioner to go back and revisit the basis that Bridgeport presented for asking for tuition. One of the big issues in this is that by charging $3,000 per student, Bridgeport would be earning about $1.2 million in revenues. And at the time, the state had basically cut their funding by about $500,000. So, so the real thing is, is like, okay, wait a second. You're, you're charging us, you're going to get $700,000 more than you were cut. Like, what are you doing with that money? And I think now also the timing of this is interesting, given the newest proposal from the governor. One of Bridgeport's arguments in gaining and getting this tuition was that we get all this money from the state in educational cost sharing. Well, the governor's newest proposal has us getting zero. So I'm not really quite sure how the commissioner will be able to reconcile the fact that we might potentially not be having any funding and Bridgeport wants to charge us. So that's where we kinda stand right now. It's basically been kicked back to the state. The interesting thing, though, is the judge didn't say anything about Bridgeport standing in this. So there's this kind of open question as to, well, you didn't rule against us, but you didn't rule in favor and you didn't even mention Bridgeport in the whole thing. So I think, you know, we're gonna basically wait and see. I think, well, that's the advice of the attorneys, to wait and see what the commissioner has to say. I mean, I don't know, state funding right now is kind of a big mystery, as we all know, so.
And correct me if I'm wrong, when I got that packet online from, from, from the coalition, I think she has, the commissioner has what, mid-July to make the decision? Was that what it said?
I have to go back and look, I honestly don't remember the timing. I know last year, Bridgeport asked for it around this time and it took the commissioner a few months to actually make the decision. So.
I thought the paperwork that I got, you know, via email on this whole thing from the attorney, I thought it said that she has until mid-July from the petition for the, when, when they gave her the petition.
It's, I honestly just don't remember the date, Donna.
Yeah.
I apologize.
So we, so she has probably another couple of months that she can take to make it.
And it, again, it's going to be very interesting because if the state, again, a lot of the, the way Bridgeport had the tuition cost calculated was based on us receiving, we, the town, receiving $6.5 million in educational cost sharing. Well, if there are any cuts, I mean, that whole, to me, the whole basis is then moot because we get no money or we get half of that, depending on whatever the state comes up with. So their basis for how they came up with the $3,000 is incorrect. And they don't have a basis for that anymore, so. That's, but that's where that stands.
Thank you. Anybody have questions? All right, hearing none, we will move on to new business. And we have three policies that are up for first review. So George, I'm gonna let you take it away.
Okay, so the first one is procedures for bus drivers, so the policy around the bus drivers. So we just updated that, brought it in line with what Cabe references. And it's actually more of a, a better reflection of the process that we actually follow for, for bus safety or, or issues with students. So that was number one. Number two, infectious diseases, we just, again, we added a paragraph at the bottom that brings us more in line with, with what Cabe suggests. We left the rest of the policy alone. And then finally, the last one, we changed the language to something that Cabe had suggested because there was a change in the law. So we, we actually just rewrote that policy to reflect what was in Cabe. So two updates and one, one kinda rewrite.
All right, does anybody have questions on these? All right, so if you have questions between now and June 5th, bring them to that meeting. This will be on the June 5th agenda as a second review and a vote on these policies. And I think, does anybody?
Does anyone have one other comment? I forgot the second point that I wanted you to remember about all of this is that Monroe Public Schools, this, this curriculum work that we've been doing is really lighthouse work. Other districts are looking very closely at the kind of work that we're doing as far as media or, or library commons curriculum, so.
Does anybody have any, anything else before we move on to adjournment? All right, hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thanks for watching, second class, daily discussion. Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you very much.